First of all, welcome to City Hall. This is September the 2nd, and as you can tell by the heat index, fall's almost here. I'll welcome you all to City Hall this evening, also all the people watching on TV at home. Before we officially start tonight's meeting, we'll have a prayer led by Laura Ward, our councilwoman, and then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and this diverse group gathered here this evening. We ask that you guide us in our decisions for the best of the entire community, keeping in mind those who are most affected by our actions. Thank you for the gift of our children in our community. Please watch over them as they go back to school this year. Keep them safe every day. Help them to soak up good knowledge and dismiss any negative messages they may hear. Help them treat others with kindness and respect, that when pressured, you will help them stand, and when they fail, they will forgive themselves and try again. Please keep our student athletes safe from injury during play and in their travels. Give them the strength to play well but fairly. Lead them to always help their opponent up and represent their school and the city of Jefferson with the highest degree of sportsmanship and character. Help us to open our hearts and minds to those who are less fortunate in our community, families who are faced with hardships, and businesses that may be struggling. Give us the personal courage to listen to their concerns with compassion and understanding, and help guide us to find the best solutions to lessen their burden. In your name we pray.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk, please, read roll.
Branch?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Costalis?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hasi?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Scrivner?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
We have a quorum this evening. Next, we'll have adoption of the agenda. I know at our pre-meeting, Mr. Bray had some changes he was wanting to make, so it's calling Ralph now.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the consent agenda, I would move to take item 2733 out of the consent agenda and put it, place it under item 7A at the conclusion of Mr. Jim Weberg's comments.
Okay.
And also, under item number 7, Presentations, I'd like to move to add as an invited guest under item 7D, Brad Bates.
Okay. Do you know his topic by chance?
I do. It's a multipurpose building.
Okay. All right. Any other changes to the agenda other than what Councilman Bray brought up? I think we also have a substitute underneath 12B dealing with Bill 2014-51 that Bob Scrivner will be bringing up later. With that...
You want to do motion? Yeah, voice him.
At this point in time...
Probably give him a second.
Who was the second on Ralph's motion?
I'll say that.
Was that Rick Mahalovich? Okay. At this point in time, all in favor of changing the agenda as announced, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we'll go into resolutions under miscellaneous agenda items. We'll have Resolution 2014-15.
A resolution honoring the Lincoln University Women's Track Team for winning the NCAA Division II Women's Track and Field National Championship.
All right, Mr. Hilper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The entire council had wanted to do this a few weeks ago, but wanted to make sure the track team could, enjoyed their summer, and then we'd force them here. But the resolution itself honors a rare athletic achievement and gives special honor and commendation to the athletic team who pursued such excellence. And specifically, although they've got quite a winning tradition, we specifically wanted to reference the NCAA Division II Women's Track and Field National Championship that they've won. So we, this resolution does that, and it honors the team and the coaches, and once the council passes it, we've got coins for all the members. Twenty-seven. If we need more, we'll get some more, but I believe that's the right number. And I think Councilman Scrivner was hoping we could get a picture. Is that right?
Yes, I was hoping that maybe they could have a picture with the mayor down in front here, and if that's possible, I don't know if we've got a camera large enough to get all twenty-seven or not.
You can give it a shot, but that's...
We'll put Bill in charge of that back there.
So that's what the resolution does?
All right. Is the coach here?
Yes.
If you could come to the podium, please.
Mr. Mayor, is Dr. Rome here?
Yes.
At this point in time, we'll consider an entertaining motion to take up the resolution as pronounced.
Dr. Rome's here as well.
Okay.
Good, I would hope we give him a chance.
Rick, are you the first to adopt the resolution? Need a first and a second, please?
Yeah, I'd move that we adopt the resolution, please.
And second, by Mahalovich. I understand Coach Jones is here and also Dr. Rome. I was able to see Dr. Rome earlier. If all of you could please come forward. It's quite an acknowledgement here.
You're always a big dog. Get a mic.
Welcome. Tell us more about this accomplishment, please.
You know it's killing him, but we're gonna put him on the spot.
Okay, the female team for this school year, 2013, 2014, they achieve a lot, and we are here to recognize the female team, but I'll just put a bit in for the male. The male also did well. They came ninth overall, and that's an awesome achievement. The female team, we won MIAA indoor, outdoor, and also the national championship. It came down to the four-by-four where we were one point behind, one point ahead, so we had to win the four-by-four to win the championship. And thanks to our skipper, Tamara Keen, we were able to win the four-by-four and so won the championship by five points. The skipper is here. She's somewhere here. She's over there. So I'd just like to say, I don't know if this is the right time, thank the mayor, the city council, Carlos, for this recognition for the track team. And I would just like to tell you guys that they were not only number-one HBCU team, not just number-one in the MIAA, not just number-one in Missouri, not just number-one in the Midwest, but they were number-one in the United States of America. And that credit go to all these young ladies sitting here in the blue, and they have worked hard, they have done well, and hopefully, we will be able to achieve this next year, our being well, injury-free, et cetera, et cetera, and bring our next championship to Jefferson City, Missouri, because this championship belongs to Jefferson City, Missouri, not Columbia, who have a football team who never win anything. This is Jefferson City, Lincoln University, not Philadelphia. So this championship belongs to Jefferson City, and it's good that the city councils recognize these kids. Again, thanks on behalf of my boss, the bigger boss, and a good friend, Mike Jones. Thanks to you guys.
Thank you. If we could, guys, if you guys could come forward, please.
Come up here and get your coins. And these are good for free parking, too, Dr. Rome told me.
I have a daughter that's a freshman at Lincoln now, so you guys have to kind of watch out for her. She's about a foot shorter than all of us. Use your coins, and you'll get a picture here. Okay, I've got a question. Who's the fastest? Good team effort, that's good.
Boss, man. Did that right, man? One.
Put your... Get in the picture. You can go get a coin.
Boss, for example.
You can get in the picture.
Okay, somebody you need.
There you go. Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't have... I don't have anything else. I'm just...
Councilman Bray used to be a photographer, so everyone just listen to him, and we'll get this done.
Everybody smile. Thank you.
One, two, three.
Put the rock, get you the middle, and want the mayor in the middle. There we go.
We should, then we should.
There we go.
One, two, three.
Got it.
Although I suspect we know the outcome, but we still have to vote. At this point in time, I feel you're ready to vote on Resolution 2014-15. Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
That's a winner. Thanks, ladies, very much. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Next, under B, it says, "Mayor's Update on Budget Schedule." It's probably only one person in this audience that knows more about budgeting, and he's over there in the corner in the very back, and that's Mayor John Landwehr. But next week, I think it's the 8th, next Monday, from 5:30 to 7, we'll have a special budget meeting. The Budget Committee will actually be meeting, and Bill Betts will be going over recommended revenues, and I will be presenting my budget for the 2015 year. Part of that does include, by the way, at least at this point in time, we're trying to get in there, is transit service to the new St. Mary's Hospital, which is scheduled to open in November. Also, C says the same thing, 5:30 to 7, next Monday. Next, we'll move into Presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. Yes, sir.
Before we do that, just out of courtesy, I don't know how many of these young ladies will want to stay for our whole meeting, but we don't want them to feel conscious about, or subconscious about leaving if they choose to leave. It might be kind of noisy if we want to give them all a chance at once to leave, or if they want to stay.
If you are here because of the last resolution, and if you have your coin in hand, if you would like to leave, you may at this time. We know you guys have studies to do, you probably have practice to do. Once again, congratulations from our entire city.
Or if they want to stay, they're welcome.
Coach, where'd Coach go? All right, I think things are coming back to order now again. Appreciate the team coming out tonight and all the representation from Lincoln University. Very lucky to have Lincoln here in Jefferson City. Under 7A, Mr. Jim Weberg is here tonight as an invited guest of myself, Councilman Bray, and Councilman Mahalovich, in his regards, I think, to Proposal 2733. Mr. Weberg, as an invited guest, you get unlimited time, so to speak.
Thank you, sir.
I know you know something about time.
I promised to use it expeditiously. Thank you. Mr. Mayor and City Councilmen and women, thank you for the opportunity to share just a few thoughts with you this evening. I'd like to express, first of all, a note of gratitude for allowing us at Capital Region Medical Center to serve the city of Jefferson and its employees for the last 20 years or more with Employee Assistance Services. My name is Jim Weberg. I manage the Wellness Center and have, for the last 30 years, provided mental health services to the community of Jefferson City. And I'd like to remind you that Employee Assistance Programs, and your EAP program specifically, is about relationships, and I am proud to say we have done a wonderful job as mental health providers at Capital Region, the city staff, the management staff, the employees of Jefferson City. Together, we have fostered a partnership that has worked. And let me say upfront, I appreciate the situation that you, as a council, face regarding where to go with your EAP program. As I mentioned, EAP is about relationships, and it's not about money. Over the last 20 years, I have met with all of your employees at one time or another to make them aware of the services that are available to them. We've provided numerous educational opportunities to your employees, and we did that at our cost. What we know is that in any given year, 15% of an employee population is at risk for a personal problem severe enough to interfere with their ability to do their jobs. And what we also know is that 5% to 8% of that 15% will require remedial help under most circumstances to continue to be productive in the workplace. And that's the gold standard that we use to determine a successful EAP program, that one would expect to see through a contract, an EAP contract, 5% to 8% of an employee population. And I'm proud to share with you that we have seen, in fact, an average of 9% of the city employees each year for the last five years of our contract with you. I believe we have done well, and we did what we were contracted to do. The relationship between CRMC, the city, and your employees is working. We have a 97% satisfaction rate, and our self-referral is 94%, which means of that 9% of your employees that we saw each year, 94% of them, on average, were self-referrals, which means they pick up the phone, they make the call for the request for help without interfering with the management staff of the city and supervisors and HR. And I must say that your HR has been a tremendous staff to work with, and we thank you for that, Gail. I believe that I and we have been readily available to respond to any need as it has arisen. In urgent and in emergent circumstances, we have been there, because I and we have been in the community for the last 30 years, providing premier mental health services. When crises occur in this community, we are one of the first to be contacted. There has been some question about our services after hours. To those who were around when our police chief suffered his serious accident a few years ago, it was our staff who gathered that Sunday afternoon with the entire police force to do a critical incidents debriefing. When the tragic boating accident occurred a few weeks ago on the Gasconade River, within minutes, my phone rang, asking us to be readily available. About a year ago, there was a near drowning at the memorial pool, and we received an urgent phone call to do a post-trauma stress debriefing with the employees there at the pool. And that's the result of being wedded to a community for 30 years. And that's what Capital Region brings to the city of Jefferson and its employees. Again, this is not about money. It's about a relationship, in this case, 30 years' worth. I hope that it is this that you will take into consideration as you make your decision about where you want your EAP services to come from. And as an august body, you have always preached "buy local" and the importance of local businesses supporting each other. We know your employees, and they know us. In your grant proposal, you suggested that the evaluation process would include a multitude of factors, including cost, quality of staff, availability to management, and availability of services. And I believe that we have fulfilled all of those criteria. What we had been paid for our services in the past was public knowledge for our other competitive bidders, and so the opportunity to underbid our proposal was a no-brainer. I believe that that information skewed the playing field, and if cost is the only consideration, puts us at a decided disadvantage. Again, I will reiterate, it is not about money, it is about relationships. So tonight, if you choose to end your working relationship with us, I want to say what an honor it has been to serve your employees and to serve all of you. And for that privilege, I thank you on behalf of Capital Region Medical Center and our staff of mental health providers. And should you choose to renew your contract with us, I can assure you that we will make you proud if you choose to do that. Thank you.
Jim, thank you very much. Is there any questions of our guests tonight?
I do.
Councilman Bray.
We've talked about this quite a bit at the well-staff level and council level. The, I'm interested in maintaining a continuity of service, especially with an EAP program. And for the, so I have a couple of questions. One I'd like to ask staff, would it be, is it possible for staff to contract directly with Capital Region for services and avoid the bidding process for such a service?
Do you mean like on a per-visit basis, or something like that?
No.
Instead of having to do a bid process?
Yes.
Yeah. I think our requirement is for a particular dollar amount for over, I think it's $5,000, we have to bid for our individual process. But I know, at least from my experience outside of Missouri, I know many cities, for a service, don't have to do that. They can go ahead and just contact directly, but I don't know what our Missouri requirements are for something like that.
It's really just a code requirement. I mean, if the code changed, then yeah, we could, but as it stands now, any service or product over $5,000, 5 to 25 gets the sealed in.
All right. Another question for Gail, I believe. Does the existing contract allow for like a one-year extension?
Well, the existing contract was a, I think it was two years with...
Five years.
Yeah, I think it was two years with three one-year renewals.
Oh, yeah, right.
So, which was a total of five years. So we are in the fifth year right now.
Okay. And so the existing contract expires December 31st?
Yes.
And the bids that we have before us now, these bids were opened May 15th, I believe?
I believe so, in May, yes.
Well, I will yield the floor for further questions, but then I'd like to perhaps follow up.
Okay. Mr. Mahalovich.
My only question is, this could be for staffer, Mr. Weberg. What would we do with our employees that are currently being seen by your staff, and how would you see that transition to another provider?
Well, I made a phone call to Gail's office just a couple of weeks ago, in that we had an employee who sort of has gotten wind that things were loose, loosened up in the air about where the program was going. And so I called Gail and said, "I think it is of the highest priority to us that we are responsible for the people that we're seeing, and we will do everything in our power to transition that care however that needs to happen." That's the ethical thing to do, and that's the right thing to do, and we will make that as graceful as possible wherever you choose to send those folks. Gail?
Yeah, I agree completely.
Any other comments on this side or questions on the right? Bob?
Gail, I think I heard you say, Drew, that there's an ordinance that requires us to bid this. Okay. So the dilemma that I find myself in is, we have a purchasing system that we purchase services, we purchase materials, and that system applies to more than just this purchase. And we have ordinances that we're bound by, just like we expect the citizens of the community to be bound by those ordinances. And we have the ability to override our own rules. I know we do. But I guess for me, it's an ethical dilemma, in my mind, when we override our rules on specific and particular cases. You say it's more than just the cost, and it is more than just the cost, and when the presentation was made to our committee, staff pointed out more than just the cost. They, I know there's a system in place where there was a committee that evaluated the bids, and I'm sure, just like it would be our preference to go with a local provider, I would bet you anything it would have been staff's preference to go with a local provider. And I believe you had that, as a local provider, had that prejudice going for you to begin with, and yet they still recommended the other provider. And it's difficult for me, when I know there's a system in place that we try to follow, that is supposed to remove, is supposed to be blind, in essence, so that it's fair to everybody. And when we go against that, when we overrule that and make a political decision to overrule that, for me, that's an ethical dilemma, just like it's a dilemma for me to sit here right now and argue against...
Success.
That's a personal dilemma, for me to argue against awarding it to a local business. But it's an ethical dilemma for me to argue against the staff committee's recommendation.
I appreciate that.
So...
I appreciate that.
I'm in a very difficult position right now, to be honest with you.
I appreciate, I appreciate your personal thoughts. Thank you.
Anyone else tomorrow? Thank you, Bob. Well said. To my left, heading back to Mr. Bray.
Thank you. Gail, I remember in, oh, a previous meeting when this was brought up, you had, you started by saying that the relationship...
And I believe you had that, as a local provider, had that prejudice going for you to begin with, and yet they still recommended the other provider. And it's difficult for me, when I know there's a system in place that we try to follow, that is supposed to remove, is supposed to be blind in essence, so that it's fair to everybody. And when we go against that, when we overrule that and make a political decision to overrule that, for me, that's an ethical dilemma, just like it's a dilemma for me to sit here right now and argue against...
Success.
That's a personal dilemma, for me to argue against awarding it to a local business. But it's an ethical dilemma for me to argue against the staff committee's recommendation.
I appreciate that.
So...
I appreciate that.
I'm in a very difficult position right now, to be honest with you.
I appreciate, I appreciate your personal thoughts. Thank you.
Anyone else tomorrow? Thank you, Bob. Well said. To my left, heading back to Mr. Bray.
Thank you. Gail, I remember in a previous meeting when this was brought up, you started by saying that the relationship with Capital Region has been a very good and positive one. There you are. Do I understand right?
That's correct. Capital Region has done a great job for us for the thirty years that we've been working with them.
Formerly, I think, twenty years, but we've provided services over the last thirty.
Twenty years. Yeah, I mean, Jim's fantastic to work with. The employees have been very happy with Capital Region, and I think it has been a great relationship.
You think the staff would be happy to continue the relationship?
I do think the staff would be happy to continue the relationship.
All right. Thank you, Gail. I have taken an interest in this, as I started out saying. And I've noticed that, because it's been a long summer and a busy summer, it's so, these bids that were opened in May have, in fact, by tonight, they have all actually expired. So I will move to reject these bids and ask staff to rebid this project.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Henry. Thank you, Larry. Comments? Questions? Rick? Mahalovich?
My thinking is, since it is this late, and you have a contract that's going to expire here, I'm willing to extend out to say we extend the contract for an additional year and bid it throughout the next year. That was going to be my amendment.
I will, I can withdraw my motion and yield the floor for your motion.
You made this, no, actually, Mr. Henry made the second.
I'll withdraw the second.
Okay. Mr. Mahalovich?
In the spirit of Councilman Bray's, then I would like to amend this motion to award the contract for one year to Capital Region and go out on a rebid next year.
Your second?
My second.
Mr. Scrivner?
I guess my question would be for staff. Is that acceptable to the staff? Is that something that, it's obviously getting late in the year. I know it's important to you to have something done so that we can move forward with this program, so people can know that they have program. And I won't argue against extending it for one year. But I want to know that that's acceptable, and you feel like that that's a reasonable compromise.
Well, I certainly think it's acceptable, and we can make that work. I don't know about the reasonable compromise piece. I don't know that that's a staff judgment to make. My only comment would be, I don't know what different outcome there would be in a year. Seems to me like, you know, another alternative would be to just go ahead and award the contract for the length of the term that was bid, and go from there. In a year, going through the process of rebidding it, and I'm not so sure the outcome's going to be much different than it is today.
And you're saying award it to the, according to staff recommendation, or award it to the current vendor?
No, I'm sorry. I understand what council's intent is, so in that case, it'd just be go ahead and award it to Capital Region.
Mr. Costalis?
If my math is oink, and I hope it is, we're talking about $7 a month over a five-year period. That's what it averages out to. I mean, and for the continuity of care for those individuals receiving it, $7 a month is nothing. And I would have to recommend we stick with the current provider, pay a little extra. It's only $7 a month. I could be off.
Mr. Mahalovich?
Following the tradition of just started, I would withdraw my motion if somebody would want to go ahead and make that motion.
I withdraw the second.
Where's the tennis ball at right now, guys?
And go ahead and...
Go ahead, Rick.
Okay, then, under these circumstances, I'll go ahead and recommend that we go to the bidder of Capital Region for the duration of this contract on the bid.
I was second. You got it?
It's been first and seconded. For point of information, how long would that be?
Five years.
Five years, okay. And I'm assuming that would be the term of their bid? Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, it actually would be like a two-year contract with, I believe that's what we were doing, was a two-year contract with three one-year renewal options, which would make it, if everything's renewed every year, five years.
Was that the intent of your motion, sir? And your second, Ralph? Mr. Grant?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I know this is going to come up, I don't know now or a little bit later on, but I know that some of us serve on the Board of Governors for Capital Region. And the question was asked, is it okay for us to vote for Capital Region if we serve in that role, that capacity? So my question to our attorney is, is it okay for us members, and I'm not for sure who all serves on the Board of Governors for Capital Region, but is it okay for us to vote? Yeah.
Yeah, it is one of those, it is not an actual conflict of interest, because you all don't benefit directly financially, neither you or your immediate family members. And I'm ninety-nine percent sure that board is a volunteer board. Then it goes to the realm of, is it an appearance of impropriety? I would argue it's not, but each of you have to make your own decision on that. So no legal requirement to recuse yourself, but you're able to if you feel it's an appearance of impropriety.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments or debate on, we'll just call it, Proposal 2733? Good enough, Rick?
I'll also recuse myself.
Mr. Mayor, I'll recuse myself.
Okay. Any other comments or debate on 2733? Bob?
Just one last comment, and I'll just repeat what I said earlier. For me, it's a personal dilemma. Personally, I'd like to vote for this, but ethically, I feel like that we have a process that we should follow. I don't know where you draw the line, where you choose when you're going to steer a vote toward a particular provider, and when you're not, when you're going to get involved and override staff, and when you're not. So I don't personally want to have to make that decision on every vote. I think we've got a pretty good system in place, so despite my personal preference, I will be voting no on this.
Any other comments or debate by council? Sing none, roll call, please.
Branch?
No.
What are we voting on exactly?
The motion.
A yes vote at this time, at this point in time, Drew, would do what? Make sure we have it right?
Restate the motion.
I'm sorry. The yes vote is to award the contract to Capital Region. And reject the others.
Okay, we'll start over again. Yes, sir.
Are we voting for the amendment first?
Okay, so the amendment was to substitute Capital Region as the order. Okay. Then yes, I guess you would vote on the amendment first, which you could probably do by voice vote, pretty easily.
And state the amendment, since...
The amendment would be to substitute Capital Region for PES.
Okay.
I guess that would be it. Well, let me rephrase that so it's clear later on. Substitute Capital Region's proposal for the EAS proposal, because there is some other differences.
And is there another vote after this, then? This is just...
Yeah, once you make substitution, then we'll have to vote. And then honestly, the question is, every ordinance requires six affirmative votes. And so the question is, is this a motion, which is only a majority, or is this an actual ordinance? Well, it's not an ordinance, so I guess it's just a majority vote. So with three of you accusing yourself, it makes a difference, because we only have seven left. And Councilman Scrivner's already indicated how he's going to vote, so it leaves you with one. But since it's a motion, it would just be a majority of the voters, so. All right, I've talked myself into it.
One thing about it, unless something happens really bad with seven, I'll have to break a tie. All right, all right. All right, now we'll vote on the amendment. Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
abstain.
Henry?
abstain.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
abstain.
Scrivner?
No.
Ward?
Aye.
So now we've done the substitution, so now we're going to move to approve the amended...
You want to give us a quick summary of that?
Yeah. Now, now that you've substituted, who is the named party on the consent agenda essentially item? So now you're voting to approve the award of the contract to Capital Region.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Branch?
No.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
abstain.
Henry?
abstain.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
abstain.
Scrivner?
No.
Ward?
Aye.
It is?
Motion passed.
Okay. Motion passes five...
Five to two.
Okay. All right, moving on. Thank you very much for that.
That, in passing that motion, we just passed an ordinance, so it takes six.
Well, that's what I was running through my mind before, but the consent agenda is not an ordinance. It's an agenda item. So it's passed by motions, I believe, that the motion, the motion carries by the majority of the body.
But there was a motion to remove that from the consent agenda.
Well, it's an interesting question, but the way the code sets it up...
It stands alone when they removed it from the consent agenda. It's a standalone ordinance now.
Well, the code itself talks about the consent agenda items, and if a councilman wants to remove it from that, then it's simply voted on by itself. It doesn't, it doesn't then identify it, the code itself does not then identify it as an ordinance, but still rather just a consent agenda item that's voted on individually. And of course, the consent agenda is designed for things that aren't controversial.
It's a party debate.
So you may point out a procedural issue, but I still would say it still remains a motion, because it's not identified as something else in the code.
Okay, I would invite you to research that some more, because if we just passed an ordinance...
It would have failed.
It should have failed.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Moving on, underneath 7B of Donna Dietz. Donna, welcome. Donna's here invited by Councilman Branch, Bray, and Prather. Donna, welcome.
Thank you. First, on behalf of Eastside Business Association, we want to extend our congratulations to Lincoln University, Dr. Rome, and all the coaches and athletes. It's a fantastic accomplishment. I am here on behalf of the Eastside Business Association. We developed, over the past month or so, a resolution that addressed the unanimous vote taken by the Parks and Recreation Committee on the Riverside Park site for the Parks and Recreation Center. We have since heard that there are at least two other proposals on how the Parks and Rec Center would be constructed. For that reason, I'm not going to read the resolution to you, but I will distribute it for your information. We know that one of these new sites is a possible partnership with Lincoln University, which we are interested in finding it more out about, because a lot of what is contained in our resolution would bear out in that partnership, community accessibility, fiscal management, and such. As Mayor Strump said Thursday night when we welcomed the Lincoln students back at the downtown event, Lincoln's an integral part of our community, and it's important that we pursue these kind of connections. We echo that sentiment at Eastside Business Association, and we would like to reserve the right to come back here after we hear both of the proposals, at least the two that we know of, and make comments on those, and be able to support or go along with whatever's proposed at that time. So at this point, I've got our resolution to distribute.
Any questions of Donna? I haven't seen your resolution yet. I don't know if there's any questions coming up out of this.
As I said, it was written specifically to the Riverside Park proposal that the Parks and Recreation Commission approved, I'm going to say, four or five months ago, for the site for the Parks and Rec Center. But since there are other plans that are being discussed at this point, a lot of it applies, but a lot of it, you know, may change based on the plan that comes forward.
So this is kind of a maybe until you... I mean, I don't know how else to say it.
Well, because we were pursuing this when we found out in midstream, so we didn't want to take up time to read a lot of it.
There's been a lot of streams here lately, too, so don't...
There's a lot of things going on, yeah.
Behind the scenes, so to speak. Okay. All right, any other questions of Donna on the east side? All right, thank you, ma'am, very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have underneath the presentations from staff consultants that invited guests. We have two more. First is Randy Allen, and then Mr. Brad Bates under 7D. Randy, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, I'm Randy Allen, and I'm president and CEO of the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce. We'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present an idea for your consideration, as well as those here tonight representing the Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Commission and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. As you know, the chamber is obliged to, by contract with the city and the county, to develop and facilitate projects that will provide economic and community development benefits to Jefferson City and Cole County. To that end, we have worked for the last several months on a concept we are presenting here tonight. The idea is that Special Olympics Missouri, and in particular, the proposed Training for Life campus, could collaborate with Parks and Recreation to build a recreation, sports training, multipurpose, and event facility that could be utilized in a partnership to save money and enhance the programs of both groups. In addition, the idea also includes a civic event center. We believe the civic event center would enhance the opportunities for even more recreation and tourism opportunities. As you will see, the proposed project would combine the resources of the SOMO Training for Life Fund, various Parks and Recreation funds, and the lodging tax. The proposed project is proposed to be located on property owned by the Jefferson City Public Schools, near the intersection of 179 and Mission Drive. This is also adjacent to the new St. Mary's Health Center. This idea is by no means a finished project, but we believe it demonstrates that there is enough potential to move it to the next level of discussion. So the idea here, obviously, is that we have developed an idea on paper and in pro forma form, and you'll see that in a little bit, to combine what SOMO had in their plan in the city of Columbia, or just south of the city in Columbia. And one of the ideas is to be able to use facilities for both Parks and Recreation and the Special Olympics Training for Life campus. Oh, sure. SOMO is an acronym for the Special Olympics of Missouri. It's Special Olympics Missouri. And they're the ones that are proposing the Training for Life campus. I won't take a lot of time tonight to go through that, because we'll be talking about this more. But their proposed project currently is just south of Columbia, on 11 acres on Highway 63. We would like for that to come back to Jefferson City. So this is, the gray part that you see here on the screen is just the concept of what the SOMO is wanting to do, less the multipurpose building. So what we would like to do is to allow them to take that out of their project and combine that with Parks and Recreation. So in this slide, we're going to talk a little bit about what it is that we propose for this three-part project. The first part is a two-court, multipurpose facility that would be separated by a mezzanine and special support area, would include storage, restrooms, so on and so forth, that would separate the two courts from what we're going to describe in a minute as the CEC. Next would be the area that we would depict as the Civic Events Center support area. It's, for lack of a better word, it's a large lobby and gathering area for... It's, for lack of a better word, it's a large lobby and gathering area for the project. The next area would be area for the Parks and Recreation Office. If this facility is to be constructed, it would require that Parks and Recreation staff be near this facility full-time. And then Parks and Recreation Lobby, as well as a concession area and a catering kitchen for the facility. And finally, 43,000 square feet, which would include three basketball facilities, seating, and flex area for the multipurpose area itself. So this is a site plan depicting Highway 179. You can see the arrow is north is left, and Mission Drive, you can see where St. Mary's facility is. This is an aerial depiction of it that was somewhat, probably a year ago, when St. Mary's was just being constructed. And we would propose this project on about 15 acres at this location. You can see that the, that the Jefferson City Public Schools owns the remainder of that property depicted here in gray. And again, a larger picture of that. Once again, this is just a concept to see that it would actually work on 15 acres, would include Parks and Rec Admin Area, would include the multipurpose and the CEC, the SOMO facility, parking, and one playfield. These playfields are what the school had depicted in their plan for a high school facility at that site. This is just, again, a quick concept to describe it. And then is if you took the roof off of this facility, you can kind of see into it and see what, what is envisioned here. Again, a two-court facility, one of the courts would be shared by the Special Olympics. The part in the middle, the mezzanine would be a viewing area, walking track for Parks and Rec, and then what we're calling the CEC, which is three basketball courts, flex floor, bleacher seating, et cetera. And then from the opposite side, so you can get a different look at what we're talking about here. So that's the concept, let's talk a little bit about the finances. The first thing that you see is the depiction of, of the SOMO area. And just to describe how this spreadsheet works, on the right-hand side are the three partners, SOMO, Parks and Rec, and the CEC, and again, their, their share of this financing of the facility. I won't go through all of this, obviously, the SOMO cost is their own. Parks and Rec cost is basically a square foot budget at this point in time. The key thing here is this first column, which shows that SOMO would be contributing $1.7 million to the construction of, of the facility that they would share usage of. And again, the soft cost involved in the project, that mouse is going crazy on me. The soft cost of the, of the project, and you can see again that SOMO would provide their own furniture fixture and equipment for their facility, and they would share the furniture fixture and equipments for the multipurpose one, and so on. One of the key things here is, we would also be asking the city and the county to predict, to put in their sales tax G, a, an appropriation, a line item for taking the road across the property, which is a key component of this project. Next, we would show, we're, we're going to show you the funding sources. Again, SOMO's number is exactly what SOMO's number is in this spreadsheet. Parks and Rec would contribute $5.5 million, which is what their budget is for their multipurpose. And then we would use proceeds from the lodging tax, both cash and bonding for the, for the length of the term of the lodging tax, to provide funding for the facility. Again, $24.7 million of funding sources and $26 million, $26.1 million of project cost. Right now, it's a negative, but again, this is very, again, very conceptual. And one thing I want to point out is, is that this assumes that $150,000 would be taken from the lodging tax each year going forward to pay for the operating cost of the CEC. And we are basically figuring a conservative approach that $500,000 from now on, for about 20 years, would be available to fund the capital construction. I know I went through that fairly quickly, but I know you're on, you've got a lot of things doing, you're going on here tonight, so I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Randy? Bob?
Randy, I had asked you once before if you could give us some sort of an estimate for what kind of heads and beds, if you will, facility like this might generate? Because I think all of us are concerned that if we use lodging taxes, that we have to show people visiting our community as a result. Have you been able to do any work on any of that yet?
Yes, especially the Special Olympics part, because that's pretty defined. They believe at the beginning that they would have 20 camps, one every, about every other week to start out, and hopefully be up to 30 or 40 camps. We're estimating at the beginning, and I think Diane has the exact numbers, between 1,500 and 2,000 room nights a year to start. So that, that is the only one that we really know. The other one is dependent upon how much, how many events, sporting events could be brought to the community to fill that space. We have talked to several people with regard to sports tournaments, basketball tournaments, et cetera, and they believe that they can fill this kind of facility 20 weekends a year, which is a substantial impact. But we haven't gone, looked at the specific numbers.
How many teams would that be? I said 20 weekends, but roughly how many teams, do you think, Randy?
Well, you know, there's not many facilities that have five courts like this, and each of these courts obviously would be a high school-sized basketball court. We've been told anywhere from 20 to 50 teams.
Councilman Henry.
And so Randy, you're asking for operating costs to come from, for the city to, to contribute or pay for those operating, those yearly operating costs?
Yes, the, the Parks already has in their concept $150,000 to operate their facility, so we would propose combining that with $150,000 from the lodging tax, because now this is a different, you know, it's a larger, different facility. So it would be about $300,000 of operating expense for this entire project.
Yearly basis? On, on a yearly basis?
Yes, yearly basis.
Thank you.
Councilman Costalis.
Mr. Allen, what has the commitment been from the senior leadership of the Jefferson City Public School System and the Board of Education?
We, we approached them early on about the concept. We've also have gone to them at a, at a meeting and asked for their permission to look at this. And so there, there is no, there is no final commitment. In fact, all the, there is no final commitment from any of the partners here tonight. But they, but they believe that this would be acceptable to the school. And again, we're proposing as part of the project budget to acquire 15 acres.
Okay. To my left, Laura.
Where did the concept of the Civic Event Center come into play? To incorporate it with the Rec Center? The Convention Center was all prior to my appointment here, so I'm just trying to see the divided line here of why this is in with the Rec Center.
Well, first of all, it makes sense. This, in fact, sports tourism is a big deal all across the country, it's getting bigger and bigger. People have talked about it in this community for a long time. In fact, there's private individuals that are even talking about the possibility of doing this on their own. So this was just an idea, it's just like, why not, why not add a facility to this and take advantage of all these synergies?
And I know there was a lot of planning meetings prior to it going to vote through the Park Board. Was the Civic, Civic Event Center something that the public wanted as part of this Rec Center?
Actually, Randy, during our town hall meetings, does anyone remember when those were? They seem like forever ago. Three years ago, Drew?
Two, three?
Two and a half?
Two.
That was a common question that came up during the town halls, is whether or not we could put a conference center funding with a multipurpose type of use. So it's, I mean, it's been talked about.
Councilman, this is simply an idea.
I understand, and if I'm going to make an informed decision on the ideas, I, I need to have all the information.
Right.
So.
Mr. Graham.
Mr. Allen, thank you for that presentation. I'm just trying to get my numbers together. So you're, you're saying that, you know, I'm being conservative about this $9 million, because I think we all feel it's going to produce more than the $9 million. But I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say $9 million for the lodging tax, and Parks and Rec's bringing to the table about 5.5. So what does that leave of SOMO?
Their contribute, I believe, I can't read this from here, it's $9.7 million, which is the cost of their facility and their, and their cooperative money with, with the facility itself.
So they would be pitching in the 9.7. So how much are they going to be spending, you may not know this, in the Columbia area for acquisition of land and all of that, you know?
I think their total budget was just around $12 million, but that include fundraising and other, obviously, they've, they've already purchased land in Columbia.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bray, I think you were next.
Randy, you mentioned that private developer. I had heard of something about that, oh, I don't know, some weeks ago, but nothing else. Whatever happened with the private developer? Did you know what happened with the private developer? Did he talk to any, do you know if he talked to Parks or you or?
Oh, I talked to him.
And?
And I think he's talked to a lot of people in town.
Is he still a player? He or she?
As far as, well, as far as I know.
Is anyone assisting or helping the private developer?
Pardon?
Is anyone, well, such as your, you know, economic development, is anyone assisting the private developer in his, in that effort?
Well, I mean, if, if asked, we would be glad to assist.
Okay.
Set them in their project.
Speaking of the Chamber, thank you very much for your time. I know you and the Chamber have put in a lot, a lot of time on this. I do have some questions. Has Parks voted on this or Convention and Visitors Bureau?
No, sir.
Have they seen the information to the degree, the depth that we have?
They're, they are here tonight seeing the information that's public as, as you're seeing it.
Okay. Yeah, civic, I'm sorry, how does the Civic Event Center differ from a multipurpose building? Or, or are they two words for the same?
Well, you can see in the, in the proposed project that we divided the, the five courts into, into two separate parts. And the reason being is that you can use those in different forms and fashions. So a multipurpose building probably would not have the bleachers and probably would not have the flex space. It would simply be basketball courts.
How many weekends did you say that, 20 weekends, they're, they're estimating? Would that, would that be for the, the full facility?
Probably the full facility, depends on how many teams are involved. But there, they would love to have a facility that had five basketball courts in it.
I assume Special Olympics will have their own, well, Special Olympics will have their own schedule?
Yes.
But these tournaments can be worked around their schedule or?
Yes, most of their activity, councilman, is eight to five, Monday through Thursday. They, they rarely use the facility on the weekends, which is a perfect match, not only for Parks and Rec, but for these, for these tournaments.
Okay. Is, is this the only location Special Olympics is interested in?
Yes.
I can understand why, it's a good place for them to have that, all the exposure. So these conversations about other locations, that would, those, those projects would not include Special Olympics is?
We assume so.
Yeah. Is SOMO, is Special Olympics committed to this, or is this, is this a concept that they're thinking about?
I believe that, I would say that they're in the same state as all the rest of the partners. We're trying to see if we can pull this together. We, we actually presented this proposal to the SOMO Board last Thursday, and we got a green light to proceed, to see what the other partners were going to, were going to say.
There are a couple of things that make me nervous about the financial package. One is the, the Parks portion of the funding is coming from a sales tax bill, is, is that right? A sales tax that goes directly to Parks and Rec. And how long have you been collecting that money for a multipurpose building?
We began setting aside some funding probably about seven or eight years ago for this particular purpose.
And, and I'm nervous about changing directions after collecting money for seven years or so, and changing projects, and, and the community, and the community not getting the multipurpose building due to a change of projects. And that's, that's a sales tax that's voted on, right, by the public?
Yes.
And when does that come due again? Do you remember?
It does not have a sunset, that's our only permanent funding.
That one has no sunset? So you could weather that storm? And then the other thing, too, is, so I'm nervous about, it seems to me that they're diverting funds from a community, community, multipurpose building to an economic development project. And then also, I'm nervous about the sales tax, or the lodging tax portion. You know, $10 million of lodging tax, I, I think we all agree, I think we can agree that, that the lodging tax was sold, you know, for the purpose of funding a conference center. And at the last minute, the language was added for, you know, tourism purposes, but that was in case, but that was only added in, in case a conference center did not happen. We're now in the third, only the, I think it's premature, and I think that being only in the third year, it's premature to commit conference center money, you know, and redirecting it to tourism. I wish there were, were other funding sources available besides the two that almost seem, you know, almost earmarked for other purposes. So that, that's a little, and I'm in a position where I would have to vote on that, and it would come, and, and I have to consider what the community's expectations are. What are, what's the total project cost that you presented tonight?
It's, I think you have it in front of you, I think it's 24, 20, 26.1 million.
We'll try to get a bigger screen one of these days, Allen.
So there's, what'd you say, 26? 26? So this project would take all of the multipurpose, all of Parks money, all of the lodging tax, plus two, $2 million from city and county that, and then a $300, a total of $300 city subsidy annually.
No, that comes from the same sources.
$300,000, what did I say? $300? I'll give you a better deal.
Anything else, Row?
Just a second. No, I've covered that. I really, really appreciate all the time that's gone into it. This is quite a package, quite a package, I just, it takes me a while to absorb it all. The financial package just makes me kind of pretty nervous, pretty nervous. That's all I have.
All right. Randy, I want to say something as the mayor, and I want to thank you and Denise and Bill, and really everyone in the room for being here. I think what we have in front of us tonight is a picture. It's a picture of something that maybe, just maybe, we can do on the west side, on the central east side, wherever it might be. I know Randy said that SOMO wasn't necessarily a player, if it's not necessarily on 179, and I don't know if that's up for discussion with them or not. I think Randy would probably know that better. But I've been with Randy in the room with SOMO, and Bill, and Denise, and all the above over the last few months at their board meetings. And I think in a, a chance for us to save Special Olympics here in Jefferson City, and truly, I think, do something that could be a marquee center, if you would, as a whole, as a whole term. term, for our city is something that we have to do. Because whether we want to face the truth or not, right now in other cities, they are winning the game of sports hospitality. Branson, Columbia, all of these other larger towns than us are semi, same-sized towns. As Bill's mentioned several times to me, they are out there trying to hustle with their CVB to get more teams in town. I can understand the community's nervousness, I think Ralph said it best, as far as using a lodging tax to do this, because before we talked about a conference center. But I think tonight, it's out, it's here, it's a picture. Let's start talking about this and other projects in the future, and let's win the game of sports marketing. Bob?
I don't know if this question's for Randy or Bill, but Councilman Bray's comments would lead me to believe that it's his belief that the Parks and Recreation would be getting less of a facility with this proposal than they would be getting, funding their own proposal, and that the citizens of Jefferson City would have less of a facility. Bill, is that the case?
Well, our concept at this point in time is the fact that two courts is not adequate to our current local need. So we're looking to spill over quite a large part of the time into the other three court areas for local programming. You know, the two courts were not acceptable to the commission. We had put together a kind of a bare bones plan, that we thought we could possibly build three courts. Again, the commission, I believe, is on record stating that they wanted that fourth court added, as well as a walking track, and we were kind of sent on a mission to see if we could find other partners to help in the funding of that, because we don't have it alone. And part of that effort is the result of some of the ideas presented here this evening. But I think we're definitely getting more if we can combine this and be a more flexible, multi-use space than if we go it on our own, or if any of the other entities go it on their own.
If I recall, and I don't know that I actually saw the proposal and studied it, but your proposal out on the east end would not have had a walking track. It would have had, was it two or three gymnasiums? Three, I think?
The concept that we came up with out there did not include a walking track, and I believe it just did squeeze in three basketball courts, smaller in size than the ones that are proposed in this conceptual plan.
So by combining this, and I'm not arguing for this, because we still have another proposal to hear, but I don't want to leave misconceptions either, that somehow the citizens of Jefferson City are getting less than what they would have gotten otherwise.
I think, as Randy alluded, it seems at this point in time that the use needs of the various parties pretty well offset and complement one another, so it appears it could be a very workable opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. Prather?
You had mentioned some of the parties that are involved, and it was brought up earlier that Lincoln might be interested in an earlier conversation. Would this proposal necessarily include or exclude them?
It wouldn't necessarily include or exclude them at all.
No. And one more question.
Go ahead.
On the ongoing operating cost, my understanding is that they were gonna build their facility somewhere else anyway. They would have had ongoing operating costs anyhow. Would they be interested in, just instead of having the city do it all, be interested in pitching in on the ongoing operating costs?
Well, that's, Councilman, that's what they're doing with their capital cost. They don't want to be in the multipurpose facility business. And so their use was limited, and they were gonna have to build an entire multipurpose facility. And you saw from the first slide up there, basically one half, one court. And so what they're doing is they're buying, they're buying into the use of that one court. You know, it's actually a benefit to the citizens of Jefferson City, because SOMO is paying $1.2 million to buy themselves into building that facility. So they're gonna, they're gonna have operating cost in their own part of their facility, but they basically want Parks and Rec to operate the multipurpose facility.
All right, next, we have some other business and other invitees tonight. Randy, thank you for being here tonight. Thanks for all the work.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question, I guess maybe for you. I know you and Randy's been meeting with SOMO. Do they give you all a drop deadline that they need in order to move forward? Because I'm pretty sure they just don't want to just keep hanging on, hanging on, and hanging on, and not knowing if this is gonna come to fruition or not. So did they tell you guys anything?
They, what they, what they want to do is, they want to, at their November board meeting, they want to have an idea of whether they're, they want to still participate in the discussions or not. Obviously, you all have to opine, Parks and Rec has to opine, everybody in Jefferson City has to opine about this before we can move forward. But the next deadline, Councilman, is the end of November, when we're gonna see what the status of this is. Thank you.
Randy, thanks again. Thanks for that question. All right, next, Mr. Brad Bates. 7D, my friend, here you are. Welcome.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, thank you to Mr. Allen for his presentation. It was wonderful. I was notified about an hour and a half ago to ask if I'd be interested in answering some questions. I think a couple of you had alluded to Lincoln University. To tell you how we came about to me standing before you, and Bob, you don't have to stand for my presence. You can sit down. I'm glad you're feeling better. This is really exciting. When Randy approached us at the commission about the possibility, we had voted unanimously to go to a certain area. We, of course, jumped on board and thought it would be a great idea to look at possibilities. And one of our commission members made the statement that if we're really being prudent with the taxpayer dollars, we just, we don't need to focus on just one, we should go out and look at other facilities, or other collaborators, or other possibilities. Being absent from that meeting, I got voted in to do it, and I am so glad I did, because to tell you the truth, I really think, as we searched and looked and talked to other folks, that we may have actually discovered the riddle that Jefferson City's asked for 40 years, and that is, how can we intertwine Jefferson City and Lincoln University to be working partners in this community? And I, you know, I want to say I'm honored to have Dr. Rome in the audience, and I'd invite Dr. Rome to come up here if I'm allowed to do so. He may want to continue or add some comments, but...
By all means.
Dr. Rome, would you like to join me? Maybe not? Okay.
Basically, he's gonna see how you do.
That's right.
That's what he's trying to say, in a nice way. I know Kevin, he's just being nice.
A winner has a million parents, a loser's an orphan. But last Tuesday, when we were doing our due diligence of going around to different groups, organizations, seeing if there was any collaboration process, we happened to secure a meeting with Dr. Rome at Lincoln University. Myself and a couple other commissioners I invited along to come with me, simply from the mere fact that it's always better to have a couple opinions as opposed to just one, and what you interpret from the meeting. We were shocked and elated at the same time to find out that Lincoln University is currently, has plans to build a recreation center on their campus for their students. It's gonna house a basketball court, it's gonna house an elevated track, it's gonna house a fitness and wellness center. And those components are extremely important, because on the study that was done for, from the citizens of what they want to see in a multipurpose center, fitness center and a walking track were number one and two. Dr. Rome's chief of facilities, Ms. Gassner, kind of looked somewhat surprised, and she said, you know, "We're due to have a ceremonial groundbreaking in October. Plans have been drawn." And Dr. Rome stopped the conversation and said, "If we have an opportunity to partner with Jefferson City to make our facility better, and the community's access to a facility better, then we need to do so." But, that being said, they are on a very strict timeline. And if I may, I just received this, I think this is prudent to the council, and I, it's pretty exciting as well. This is a letter from Dr. Rome, and it says, "Dear Parks and Recreation Commissioners, this letter is written to express Lincoln University's support in exploring potential partnerships relative to the idea of locating the new Parks and Recreation multipurpose facility on the campus of Lincoln University. Lincoln University is gearing up to construct a new student recreation facility on its campus, and with several components overlapping and meeting the needs of our students and your needs, it appears further exploration provides opportunities to determine if a partnership is feasible. Time is of the essence, though, as Lincoln University is already engaged in its project and will need to know very soon if the partnership is feasible. We look forward to working with you to better determine our mutual needs and keeping the best interest of each organization in mind." And I do have a copy for everyone. Number one question came out. Is there room to put it on there? Lincoln immediately engaged their design team and found out within two days that they were already starting sketches on how a facility would look. Basically, in much the work that Randy had done, you can have a partition wall where Lincoln has its facility, it's combined right with what would be the multipurpose center facility, and it can coexist harmoniously, and you can remove that wall should you need for larger tournaments, as I think the mayor had mentioned, that sports tournaments are a huge business. It's interesting to note that with Lincoln's Jason Gym, JC, YMCA, Trinity, and two courts at Elias, if you build this facility, you have 11 basketball courts within one mile. Both of them have highway access within one mile. We were excited about this opportunity, so I wanted to present it. I had enough questions from the council and was asked to come and present it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Henry?
Brad, thanks for coming on such short notice. I appreciate your time and your efforts that you've also put into this. I've got a few questions, actually. One being, based off of the original plans that the commission, that the commission voted, the Parks Commission voted on in terms of a rec center, does this meet the needs, would this meet the needs of that, and also Lincoln's needs?
Yes. First, I want to say thank you to Randy for the work that you've done in the city. And as I share with Randy and everyone, Lincoln is willing to work with the community and whatever is best for the community. And so we're not necessarily advocating for any way but what's best for the community, and that's what we're willing to do. It's true, it would meet the needs, you know. For us, as we had the conversation, I said, if this is a possibility, it wouldn't make sense for Lincoln to build a wellness center, and then the community build a wellness center in the same community to meet the same needs. But by partnering, we could have four courts, and we could have the recreation facility to have tournaments. But one of the other things that excited me as we talked is, there may be enough money in the project to put, to revamp the tennis courts, and refurbish the tennis courts, and put a tennis center in the corridor as well. And so that's the thing that really excited me, if we could take where the tennis courts are at Lincoln and put a tennis center there, and then we have the multipurpose center, and that would surely meet the community needs when it comes to recreation in my mind.
And then also, I know Councilman Bray, he mentioned the financial, mentioned his financial piece of this particular type of a project. How does the, or Brad, how would the lodging tax funds fit into this particular project?
That's probably above my pay grade, but it would seem at this point, I believe, Lincoln has the appropriate money already in their fund. It's there to be spent. The Parks and Rec has their money in the fund. I'm not saying that it would be an $11 million project exactly. It could very well be less, it could be a little bit more, but it would seem that the synergies created between the two perhaps wouldn't need as much, or wouldn't need to touch that, just in layman's.
Brad, I have a follow-up to that. Would you be, if SOMO was interested, would Lincoln be interested on them being a part of their campus?
Sure, absolutely. And one of the good things, that, one of the things that we've said is that we already own the property, and so the property is not an issue, and we know that there's enough acreage there to include them.
How many total acres are there? I know, I think Mr. Allen said 15 acres, was this...
I think we have 40 acres available in that spot.
I'm sorry?
Forty acres we have.
There's 40 acres in the Chestnut area, and there's another portion that looking at between the high school and Dwight T. Reed Stadium that moves north, which is less. But, I mean, I think Lincoln would be open to anything that, you know, to be a partner in any way.
Brad, I know, I know you've played a big role in this, and I appreciate that, but I've got a question for you, just man to man. Are you ready?
I'm ready. Fire away.
Would it be possible, you think, for Parks, some type of civic event center, convention center, whatever you might want to call it, okay? Would it be possible for all of this to be located there in that site?
Well, then I would be obligating what the civic event or slash convention center monies. I'm just talking from a Parks and Recreation standpoint.
I'm just talking for a space.
Yeah.
I mean, could it, could it fit?
Well, I don't, you know, if... Go ahead.
Sheila says, "We have 40 acres. I think that's enough to accomplish..."
I mean, because one part about this, as I was saying earlier, it's, you know, it's us against Columbia and Branson, so if we're gonna do something, let's go big or go home.
And we said we were open to SOMO. I don't know if they're open to, I think Randy shared, the location, but we're definitely open, open to partnering, but...
Great. Mr. Scrubner?
Dr. Rome, you and I spoke very briefly, gosh, it's been weeks ago, I don't know just when exactly, but as my fellow councilmembers know, I've been excited about the idea of trying to partner with Lincoln on a project like this. Only, the mayor says, "Go big or go home." I guess my vision has been something more in the line of a field house, quite frankly. I wanted something large enough to have an indoor track, so that our, we could have some indoor track meets here. But you had told me when we talked before that there was, that the state, that you could get up to 50% funding for buildings that you built. Now, I don't know if there's enough time, based on your timeline, but it would seem to me that if some way we could funnel the money through the university, so that the university could then match that with state funding, you know, instead of talking about a $12 million project, you might be able to talk about a $25 million project.
Well, the state actually allocated, the legislature actually allocated money to us this year, and the governor withheld the funding, and they haven't decided where that's going to go, but we already have the resources to go ahead with what we were planning on building. If the state releases the money, we would have additional funds. I think an additional 2.5 million from the state? 2.8 million from the state to go towards this, that the governor is holding right now, but they may release it.
Do you envision, and I know there hasn't been any time to draw drawings, or do proformas or anything, but do you envision Lincoln's participation making this a larger facility?
Well, that's what we're looking at now, even working with Parks and Rec or anyone. I think there's the potential to do that. We're open to whatever the community, yeah.
And we don't want to forget, anybody that's watching this tonight, everything that's been talked about tonight is purely concept at this point.
Right. Conceptually, we are definitely open to it.
Okay. Thanks.
Dr. Rome, you'd mentioned, or Brad had mentioned, that you're on a timeline with your new facility, and that includes Boys and Girls Club, right?
Yes.
Okay. What is your timeframe? I mean, we're all in the same picture.
And I met with the Boys and Girls Club last week and today to let them know what we were doing and to make them aware of it. I think they had some concerns initially, because they had, I think, had initial conversations with Park and Recs, maybe some time ago, about a facility, and they had concerns about safety and security, but I assured them that we could resolve any safety or security issues, because we could close off portions of it to allow the boys and girls to use it. But for us, and as you see, we probably have many students here, if you want to stand up, and we have many students who were excited about the possibility of, and these are our student leaders of this happening, and they know that we've promised them a facility, and we want to make sure that we fulfill our obligation, because not only are we doing it, the students voted to self-tax themselves to raise money to pay for the equipment in the facility. And so we've already started collecting money from the students for the equipment that will go in the facility, and so the students are excited, whether it's a combination or whether it's individual, but I think we owe it to them to have some type of facility available to them. Thank you.
Mr. Castellus?
Brad or Dr. Rome, whoever wishes to answer. The way I understand what you're putting forward right now, without SOMO in the picture... The way I understand what you're putting forward right now, without Somo in the picture, Parks and Rec and Lincoln would be self-funding this thing. You're not being, coming back to the council asking for operating costs to be covered or anything outside of maybe some initial additional funding?
To keep, to keep Bill's blood pressure lower, let me say, you know, this is a concept, just as Randy said. If, if, if that concept would work, yes. I know, Dr. Rome, they already have the money in place to do it. If our project, when we looked at four courts, was roughly 6.6, 6.8 million dollars, that included the elevated track, that included the elevator that went to it. If we can share some of those, some of those resources, then we could lower the project cost, but I don't, I don't want to paint Bill in a corner or I'll be kicked off the commission.
It's all conceptual at this point, just getting ideas.
Right. But it would seem that it could be a pure multipurpose center where you have the hardwood floors and it could be used for the multipurpose 24/7.
Thank you.
But it would be all one room, though, right?
Well, no.
Basically, oh, okay.
I think the design is still, I think, looking at what Randy has proposed, I think this is a good, I think Randy's done some of the work, a good model to look at, but we really have no design yet, so it's open to possibilities.
Okay.
We should have something next week, if, if, I mean, it is a feasible possibility.
Who's, I have to, I have to ask Bill a question. Bill, you've been kind of quiet tonight, obviously. As you can tell, our community wants to do a lot with your department, which is a great spot to be in. I want to thank Denise for her help. Where do you see us going next? What's your thoughts? You're the director of that department, I just think you ought to have something to say.
Well, I know in, in the past, you know, various partnerships have been discussed, what, what's presented here tonight is all new to the commission there here, and at the same time, you are, and obviously you've got a lot of homework to do. Does present some interesting and exciting possibilities, how exactly would meet our, our needs overall. It's way too preliminary to make an assessment on that or whether sufficient funds are there for operating expense, but I, I think it's certainly, along with the charge the commission has given us to look at various alternatives and opportunities, and this seems to be one that, you know, bears some further investigation and studies. As Dr. Rome said, it's all very preliminary right now, but when we start putting some meat onto the bones, we'll have a better idea of usage schedules, of costs, of space allocations, things, things like that, as we get together and talk about these things more. It's a little preliminary to react now, not knowing exactly what we're talking about.
I have a question for Mr. Lockwood.
Well, I think, to summarize what we're all trying to think, I think we're all in a good spot, because I don't see anyone, we have Daniel Wynn back here from 17 and Fox 22, and we have the newspaper back there, and whoever else may be in the press, I don't see Branson and Columbia having this discussion tonight, period. Laura, I'm sorry, Carlos was next, my bad.
I just have a question, Mr. Lockwood. You said that you need more time to go back to the commissioners to, to help make a decision. How long do you think that would take in order for the commission to fully understand what project that's being proposed for Lincoln University and Parks and Rec?
Well, our next meeting is next Tuesday, a week, week from tonight, and obviously we're not going to have much that we can take a look at or react to by that, that time. I would say it's going to take a couple of meetings to, at best, to hammer, hammer this out.
Because I thought I heard Mr. Bates said that they could have some plans as far as?
No, Lincoln University's design team was going to have some preliminary renderings for us next week, just to look at.
Yes.
And is that for the Lincoln and the Parks and Recs project together?
Yes.
So, it is a possibility that the commissioners can take a look at that next week?
And, and we're all using the same architect, so, we're all using the same person, so I think.
Must be Architect Alliance, huh?
Architect Alliance, so they.
It's a good business to be in.
Okay, any other comments for tonight? We obviously have a lot of homework to do behind this, I say behind the scenes, I would hope that all of these conceptual drawings that are brought up at any meeting, whether it's Parks or, Brad, I think you have a committee that's, that's looking at different buildings and sites and all the above, that, that the public gets a good look at all this. Who's next? Laura, I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to visually picture the location on the LU campus.
I think what, what Kerry, one of them that he had talked about was between Jefferson City High School and Dwight T. Reed Stadium, there's a large sloping hill that extends north, northward all the way to the ROTC building or the practice field. And when discussing some of the synergies we could have, and Dr. Rome had mentioned tennis, if you wanted to really step outside of the box and look at that athletic corridor where you have a college football stadium, a high school football stadium, softball fields, baseball fields, this may be the first step where we could actually all-weather purpose a field or something that could be utilized for, from Lincoln, from the Parks and Rec, and if, if Somo were a part of the project for them as well. But there are definitely some synergies we could take advantage of.
Okay, I believe Somo was wanting a high visible area with that location in our Lafayette Exchange, is, would that site be conducive to being an easy access site?
I think with the interchange coming there, I think it's very easily, easily accessible. And, and to be honest, I haven't quite understood the high visibility, because I think that Lincoln, where we're situated, there's a high visibility area, there's a high school, there's a university, there are people who, who travel through there, and with the new interchange and the signage, anyone who passes through will know that it's there, so I, I believe it would be very visible.
Thank you.
Ken, did you have something?
Yeah. And maybe this is a broader comment, but, you know, Mr. Mayor, you, you pointed out the picture, this concept, and I feel like we're spinning our wheels in a couple different directions there right now, that, you know, we're talking about the lodging tax fund, you know, but the council necessarily hasn't been publicly engaged in this, this particular process. I think about how much time we spent on the conference center, both publicly and, and in closed session with those developers, and that wasn't, that was a lot of time. And I know there's some deadlines that are sort of pushing this process, Special Olympics, with the desire by November to have something to their board, not necessarily finalized, but at least a no-go, no-go. Lincoln's certainly underneath a tight timeframe. And I'm trying to wrap my head around, what's the proper process for people involved to make sure that we collectively work on some options and, and don't end up sort of partitioned off in different ways? And a couple of thoughts, I don't, you know, from the city's perspective, I'm not certain, you know, what level Steve has had in things, or if Drew's been involved in any negotiations of things. Obviously, the Parks Department, Bill, and the commissioners, I don't know the solution to it, but I, thinking out loud here, I feel like the, the process and what we're doing right now, it may not lead to a healthy resolution to this quite yet, just because it seems like we've got a lot of interested people with a lot of great ideas, with a lot of passion, and, and I can picture a result that we get to, and I want to make sure that it's a collective effort and that it, it doesn't do anything to sort of divide us or cause challenges, and it's not a winner or loser in terms of site locations. And so, you know, a couple of thoughts would be to, you know, direct some staff to sort of start digging on this with, with the interested people, Dr. Rome, Randy, Bill, Steve, to hammer some of these things out so that we're not here in two weeks still kind of articulating, or that the commission's not sort of hearing about it and hearing about it, and then time just runs out on the clock and we didn't quite.
And end up with nothing.
Yeah, exactly. And, I mean, I've had conversations.
Like the buzzer going off.
You know, throughout the conference center process, that I believe sports, tourism, or youth athletics is a great opportunity. There's a wealth of these facilities across the country being built right now, and some really great facilities, and so I think we've got to figure out how we're going to bring this to a resolution and, and get us working together on it, and explore these options, and make sure that, you know, we're not walking down a path with Lincoln, walking down a path with Special Olympics, and we get so far that we're so far apart, and if, back at this point in time, if we tried to partner, we could have walked down that path together.
Councilman Hussey, I, I think you make a great point, and that is one thing I'd forgot to bring up, is that since this is a project with infrastructure in place, with roads already there, even though it's, it's the Parks and Lincoln University really looking at a collaboration, in my mind, the city has to be at the table as far as giving us some guidance with, you know, the infrastructure, what's, what's already in place and what we can use, what, what it would take, so I would, I would welcome.
Steve, do you have any comments at all, sir? You can reserve those thoughts for after, after Councilman Bray, because if everyone's okay, we're going to wrap it up with Steve.
Actually, I was going to ask, you know, for follow-up, would, Mr. Crowell, would you be the, the logical choice to continue, you know, continue this conversation and keep track of what we've heard here? Or, you know, Bill has a, Bill has a commission, commissioners meeting Tuesday. Would they want, would you want these guys there? I know that the mayor offered staff's assistance to, to Brad and his efforts. I just want to make sure that there's going to be some kind of follow-up, so we can find out if this, if this project has legs or not. So, can we leave here with an, an idea of what the follow-up is?
As Steve continues to think, Ralph, you, you said Brad's idea. I think this needs, I think all of this needs to be Jefferson.
Brad's working with the commission, yeah.
I understand that, but I think this needs to be Jefferson City's.
Yes.
Total idea, as far as what we can do either in two places, in one place, or whatever it might be. I'd thought a lot about this over the weekend, there's some things that could be done in two places. I think, Steve, are you ready? Bob.
One, one entity that I see represented here tonight is the Cole County Commission, and one of the, this proposal was going to require about $2 million worth of infrastructure, and if we were to use Lincoln University, that's $2 million that we don't have to spend. We may spend it on something else, but we don't necessarily have to build a road, we may have to improve Lafayette a little bit, I don't know, but I've long felt that this is the kind of project that all the citizens of Cole County could take advantage of and use and probably will, and there's absolutely no reason why Cole County Commission shouldn't be involved in this discussion and contributing to this project.
He bought you a little time there, Crowell. Welcome to Jefferson City.
What was the question?
Well, I think what Ralph was trying to ask, and Ralph and I were having a sidebar, and Ken was asking the same thing, is what's our next step?
It was the Employee Assistance Program question.
Yeah, and Jim is still here, by the way.
We know how that went. If, if, if the question is, has staff really, have I been involved and Drew been involved? We haven't been involved in that process and discussions much. There are certainly two different proposals there. I don't know that they, they really have different goals and different objectives. I don't know how you go about identifying which one may be the best or not. It seems to me, and I'm just going to be candid with you, I think that there's some questions that, from my point of view, should be answered before you can even start have, before I could be involved in helping to bring some focus to those two proposals. For example, subsidy, yes or no? How much? Partners, who? Who not would maybe be a partner? Location? If location is an, an issue, the event center component, or how big of a multi-people, so there's all those different kinds of questions that, once those get answered, I think they bring focus to a particular type of an option. And I don't know that I can add much until you've started having those kinds of discussions. Now, one way to do it is to have a proposal and start talking about a proposal and start figuring out all those different components as they apply to a specific proposal, but you're still going to answer those questions. So, to answer your question, tell me what you want to do, and staff can be certainly involved in the discussions, try to add some focus and make sure that different components that are important to the city are included in those discussions, but they're really two different proposals from my point of view.
I think a lot of times we're, we're guilty of, of what I think some people call group think. It's easy for 11 of us to kind of see something coming before it gets to the cameras and the, and the press, so to speak, and I think one thing I think we need is a little bit of time for the public to weigh in on what they've heard tonight, what they'll see, obviously, on the news and, and everything else, but I'm, I'm very encouraged about what I'm hearing that maybe, just maybe, this time Jefferson City will win. Bob, then we're going to wrap it up.
All right, last comment. I personally think, Steve, that your contribution would be just pulling the, the pieces together and, and bringing, bringing, you know, maybe serving as a chairman of a committee that's made up of Dr. Rome or his representative, and Brad, and Randy, and, and maybe somebody from the commission, and someone from Somo, so that all those, the bill, everyone who is going to be a contributor and a, and a player in this, has a seat at the table to say, yes, we can bring this to the table, we can add this component, we're all right with this, we're not all right with that, because that's what it's lacked so far. There's been several different groups that have been talking individually, but there hasn't been any combined group. Now, we know who the players are. We know everyone that is willing to contribute, and let's get them all to the same table, and let's get them all talking about what the possibilities are. And, and until all the players are sitting at one table, we don't know what the possibilities are. And, and I think that you could be the chair of that group if, unless someone thinks it ought to be somebody else.
Bob, I've got a, I just asked Drew a question. Someone just texted me, actually, and said, what we really need is a task force, and I think what we could do with that would be, Drew, you can tell them if we can do this in, in this amount of time, but I think the council has the availability to create a task force, and I can obviously nominate, or we can just appoint the people that we want to it right away. We actually have a special meeting next Monday night, thinking off the cuff here. Would it be possible for the, for the 11, or the 10 of you to come up with some names that you would want on that task force between now and next week?
My personal opinion is that it ought to be the principals that have been involved in this. It doesn't need to be anybody else at this point. Let's find out what the contributors are willing to contribute, what, you know, there's certain things that Lincoln is going to have to have in order to want to be a contributor, there's certain things that the Parks are going to have to have to want to participate, certain things Somo has to have. Everybody has certain requirements to participate. Everyone has certain contributions. Let's find out what their requirements are, what their contributions are, and what the end result can be once we get all that put together. And, and all it needs is someone to pull it all together and, and get everyone at the same table and get them together to talk about it. And I, and I don't think you'll have anybody on the task force or anything else other than those principals.
Including the city and the county?
Yeah, put, get, get, if you can get someone from the county, maybe they want to appoint the county engineer or something, I don't know. It, it's, it's not so important who the, the representatives of each group are, you just need a representative there that has the authority to speak for the organization that they represent.
I would, I'd like that approach also.
I like that approach.
All right, Larry. I, I don't know exactly, Drew, what do you think, you're a guy?
I probably not. Why don't you, next Monday's a budget committee meeting, but we could start it with a special council meeting, and y'all can give it some thought about if Councilman Scrivener's idea was the way to go, and we can formalize it in an ordinance if you want. If I understood correctly, you do want to create a task force, is that the general feeling?
If you want to call it that, I, I think it's just a working group.
Well, that's fine. That's better, because if you appoint someone, it becomes a public meeting, which isn't a bad thing, except there's a lot of regulations going with it.
Bring a working group together and see what are the possibilities.
Steve, do you need a motion?
I mean, Randy's given us possibilities tonight, Brad and Dr. Rome have given us other possibilities. Let's see what we can actually. Let's see what we can actually realize out of this thing. We've got an opportunity to create some synergies. Let's find out what those synergies are.
Got it.
All right, anything else? As a community, I think we're pointing in a positive direction. We'll see where we go, and hopefully, we win this one, as I said earlier. We will take a 10-minute recess. Welcome back to round two. Okay, we are now at announcements by the mayor, council, and staff. And next on our agenda is Ms. Janice McMillan. Welcome, Janice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to announce that we are hosting two open house dates to obtain comments from customers on solid waste services. Those open house dates are Tuesday, September 9th, from 4:00 to 7:00, and Tuesday, September 16th, from 4:00 to 7:00, in the large conference room here at City Hall. And these comment sessions are being held to collect the thoughts and ideas and comments from the current solid waste customers and others interested in providing comments before we draft the scope of services for the next contract. The current contract ends in October of 2015. So, we want to collect comments in advance of preparing that scope before it goes out for a proposal or bid next year.
Any questions of Ms. McMillan?
So, this precludes any extension of the current, we're going to bid no matter what.
That is the plan so far. The council, as you might recall, adopted a resolution last, or earlier this year, that set out the timeline for developing the scope and bidding or sending out a new request for proposals.
And I guess, one of the questions that came to my mind is, you know, it was quite a process that went through to come up with the current system as it is currently put together. And there was a minority, I don't know just exactly what the percentages were, but there was a minority that was very adamant about retaining a bag system. Will that even be discussed as a concept? And would we, let's just say that the group that does show up, because, you know, a lot of times these meetings aren't really well-attended, you get what would appear to be a majority that no longer want recycling and no longer want the carts but want bags. How would you respond to, in theory, if that happened?
Well, I would say that it's all on the table if we're going to request proposals or bid it out. At the present time, we don't know how many companies would be interested in providing the service, so we can only assume that there may be more than one provider. And that provider may not have automated systems as the current provider does. So, I would say it's all pretty much on the table.
It's all on the table.
And, you know, from my perspective, now, I suppose in the development of the scope, that could be narrowed. But, we're, you know, that's the purpose of obtaining comments from the customers, to find out that, what their, what their thoughts are, so that we can hopefully craft a scope that at least addresses a good portion of those needs.
But, I think your comment, that it's all on the table, really ought to give people a, you know, an idea that if they want to shape this next contract, they need to participate because they're getting the opportunity.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Graham?
Let's have a question for you, Ms. McMillan. I think, oh, correct me if I'm wrong, under the last contract RFP that went out, was it specified that the company must own the landfill or not?
I wasn't involved in that last one.
I wasn't either, but the answer is no, they didn't have to own it.
That wasn't a part of it?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. McMillan on 8A? Jim, any other comments? Janice?
I just hope that anybody who wants to attend, please do.
All right, thank you very much. 8B is also Janice, on about wayfinding open house.
Yes, on September 10th, the Capitol area MPO staff is hosting an open house to view and comment on the draft regional wayfinding plan that's being developed. And again, that one's being held in the large conference room in City Hall, Wednesday, September 10th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.
All right, any other questions on 8B of Ms. McMillan? All right, moving on. Actually, under 8, any other announcements by councilor staff that we may have missed at the pre-meeting? Okay. Moving on, presentations from the gallery. We have nothing under number nine. Let's see here. The consent agenda, one of my favorites. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to take up the consent agenda. For those watching at home, B has been removed and voted on earlier and passed with a vote of five to two. It's been moved, Dan.
Seconded.
Seconded, thank you, gentlemen. Discussion on anything as far as the consent agenda. Drew, could you remind the viewers at home, how many council members does it take to take something out of the agenda?
Two.
Consent agenda, just two?
Two.
All right. Seeing no discussion, I feel you're ready to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we'll go into bills introduced. This is where we have first reading of our bills that will be coming up before us in the next few weeks. Well, first reading of 2014-52, please.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by creating the Public Transit Advisory Committee.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Clerk indicated, this bill would create a Public Transit Advisory Committee. The, I think the issue's been discussed at a couple of different committee, committee-level meetings, and the final makeup of the committee ended up being seven members, three of which had some designation such as a chamber member, user of transit, and a not-for-profit member, and then four at-large members of the seven. Basically, the ordinance also indicates the committee would report to the Public Works Committee biannually. They have some general duties listed there. Seek partnerships and opportunities, research and explore funding opportunities, review and advise on any bills proposing changes JeffTran routes, provide a forum for public discussion, provide a forum for city staff to discuss and receive input, promote use of JeffTran, and other additional items that may come up. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Marash on 2014-52? All right, seeing none, we'll have first reading of 2014-53, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 11.41 acres from M1 Light Industrial to M2 General Industrial for land addressed at 355 North Shamrock Road, described as part of New Madrid Private Surveys Number 2680 and 2906, Township 44 North, Range 11 West, Jefferson City, Coal County, Missouri.
Janice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is located at the intersection of North Shamrock Road and Algoa Road in an industrial park. The Chamber of Commerce is actually the applicant. They constructed a spec building on this property in 2007. And in order to allow for some marketing flexibility and interaction of a prospective industrial client, they've requested that the property be rezoned from its current designation as M1 Light Industrial to M2 General Industrial. This is a heavy, well, this is our heavy industrial zoning district. And so, this zoning district would allow outdoor operations and outdoor storage. Location shown on the screen. It's actually in two separate tracts. One is east of the Shamrock, which is about 10.72 acres. And then, west of Shamrock is a small tract, .69 acres. So, the total acreage for the total tract, combined tracts, is 11.41 acres. Here's a photo of the site with the spec building shown on the larger tract. And this is a street view of the site. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this rezoning at their meeting in August. The public hearing on this rezoning is scheduled for Monday, September 15th, in the council chamber. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. McMillan on 54? I'm sorry, 53. Any questions? All right, moving on, we'll have first reading of 54, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a portion of the southern end of the Lafayette Street right-of-way.
Mr. Matt?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, this ordinance would vacate Lafayette Street right-of-way. It's on the southern end, kind of located behind the Armory and Elks Club, if you will. Unimproved right-of-way, obviously. The owners adjacent to the right-of-way asked that it be, they own property on each side of this right-of-way, so they asked that it be vacated to make their property contiguous. And went before the Public Works and Planning Committee, recommended approval to the full council. We'll note that we'll maintain a utility easement on this section of right-of-way. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on 54? All right, moving on, first reading of 55, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2013-2014 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds from the general fund.
Mr. Marash? Oh, I'm sorry, 55, there's Bill.
I'm going to let Matt take care of it, but, I'm just kidding.
You're going to have a long night if you haven't done the math.
That's right. Basically, what this is, is back on November 2012, the city signed a note with the Fireman's Pension Board to pay them $370,000 plus interest. We took a idea to the Finance Committee to go ahead and get this paid off instead of continuing to make payments on a yearly basis, of which we have not made one yet, but this was going to be the first year to make one. And we said, why don't we just go ahead and pay off the note, pay off any of the interest that we owe, and take that out of fund balance? What we're asking for is a supplemental appropriation out of fund balance to go ahead and pay off the note. We feel now's a good time for a couple of reasons. We have some expense line items, such as the airport line item, and then we have some revenue line items that are coming in pretty well. So, we feel that now is a good time to go ahead and get this note taken care of.
Any questions for Bill on 55? All right, thank you, Bill. Next, we'll go into bills pending. This is where we have a third reading of our bills and normally vote on them. We'll have a third reading of 2014-50, please.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to the requirements to serve on boards and commissions.
Gail?
Thank you. This amends the code for the residency requirement for volunteers who are serving on boards and commissions. The actual wording for the residency requirement says residency requirement prior to appointment. We've really operated under the rules that the residency requirement lasts for an entire appointment, but the wording itself really doesn't match that. So, the recommendation is just to remove the words "prior to appointment" so that when people are appointed to boards or commissions that do have a residency requirement, that that residency requirement lasts throughout their appointment. This won't affect anybody who is currently appointed to any boards or commissions, and nor does it affect anybody for any of those boards or commissions that don't require the residency. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on 2014-50? Any debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Gringam?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2014-51, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to an agreement for the sale of real estate to Jeffrey F. Kempker and Linda R. Kempker.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll get to the substitute in a minute if you want me to explain it first. But, this is an ordinance that would authorize a sale of property at 1206 Boonville Road to Jeffrey Kempker and Linda Kempker. Back, some of the council will remember that back in 2012, we purchased this property for the purpose of putting down part of the Coal Junction sewer line onto it, with the expectation we would then go out and sell it. We purchased it at that time for $75,000. Upon the completion of the project, we've bid it out and got a $70,000 bid, so we feel really, frankly, happy with that. We do need a substitute for the legal description that was originally proposed had a little issue in it because of the boundaries of Boonville Road. So, I think maybe Councilman Scrivener would make a motion to amend the agreement to include the revised legal description emailed to the council.
Councilman Scrivener?
I do make a motion that we substitute the bill that was mailed to the council for the 2014-51.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. They would take up a substitute that was emailed to the council this afternoon. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we'll talk about the original motion as substituted now. Any other questions on 2014-51? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes. Nothing on the informal calendar that I see, nothing on resolutions. Presentations from the gallery on other topics. First, have Mr. Paul Van Horn. Welcome, Paul.
Hello, glad to see you again. Let me compliment you tonight. It was great hearing you. I think I agree with all of you. And as far as the, one is the proposal that you've been discussing about the multipurpose center. In fact, one of the groups that we get together with, some of the things that they were discussing, number one, on the agenda when they did a task force, was transportation. Number two, location of the multipurpose center. Number three, city council enforcement. We know if we drive up and down East Capitol, we have a lot of boarded-up places. We also, so that is very important. Another is diversity, developing the interpersonal relationship within Jefferson City residents. That is very important. Another is support that we've had of grandparents raising grandkids. We know proper parenting skills, family development. Now, how does this all fall into play? If you recall, way, way back there, we presented to each of you resolution. A livable community is one which incorporates such features as safety and healthy neighborhoods, sustained employment, which is jobs, excellent education. And we know, we've been reading the paper, and you know what an excellent education is. Adequate housing, retaining community services, positive image, a sense of community, neighborhood-based culture and recreational activities. We know from an educational perspective, what do kids do when they get out, whether you're elementary or secondary? What happens when they get out of school at 2:30? We know that, in fact, you had presented to you that within the Old Town, or Downtown Core, 53% of the households are one-parent households. So, where are the kids, and what type of services do we have available? To create and sustain such a livable community...